Let me, I'll, we call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the school committee. Note that we are on Zooms. You can connect via Zoom. The Zoom link is on the agenda, which is on the Watertown Public Schools website. Also, it's being broadcast on cable TV. Channel eight Comcast and channel 15 RCN. You can also, there'll be opportunities to participate in the public forum. You can do that by raising your hand when we get to that point. You can also add text messages to 617-581-7037. And those will be, messages will be put into the Q and A. And I note also that this meeting is being recorded. So have a roll call.
Okay, Kendra Foley.
Here.
Billy Reed. David Stokes.
Here.
Max Eders.
President.
John Borts.
President. Amy Donahue.
Here.
Okay. Well, here, Lindsay Moscow was unable to make it tonight. First item would be the public forum. I don't know if I'll see anybody.
We have a hand.
One hand. But I don't see who's doing it.
Peter Santola.
Oh. How come he doesn't come to the top of the list here? That's weird. Okay, anyway, Peter, is he, can you speak?
Oh, I can, yep. There he is.
Thank you, everybody. I just want to have a couple of things. I just wanted to congratulate some groups. I mean, all you folks have been doing a wonderful job. But I just wanted to give a shout out to the crucible. It was a great play, online play. Casey Kirkpatrick and the support staff and the actors and actresses. And my, my son Phil and my daughter Leanne, so I could have mentioned them. So that was just great. They did a real nice job under very difficult situations. So that was a wonderful thing. Next thing, I thought Ryan Murphy and his staff, support staff, the coaches and the student athletes really did a wonderful job this year under very, very difficult situations. So I, I think the fall season, while I start, I tried to stay out of Victory as much as possible. But when I went in there, everything was great and safe and it was great spirit. So congratulations. I'm going to push the envelope a little bit with the turf and a few of the courts. I sent some out today. But because, you know, at this time, you know, a lot of the indoor facilities are not available. We're going to keep the turf open eight to eight every day, weather permitting, as well as some of the courts at Victory, Casey and Mark's lake, just to try to get people out there. Try to make it reasonable and do the best we can. And then if anybody, anybody has some ideas, we do have an open forum on Tuesday. I've been kind of lonely lately. So Tuesday at seven o'clock, we have Zoom. So keep up the great work. Hopefully, everything goes well. My kids are looking forward to coming to school. I'm sure most of the staff and I, I'm sure Joel, you're looking forward to seeing the kids on the 30th. So thank you for everybody's efforts.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else in public forum? There is another public forum at the end of the meeting as well. So seeing none, we'll close off public forum. Next item on the agenda would be an update on school reopening, which is our, kind of the major agenda item for tonight. We thought it was important to, to provide an update rather than wait another two weeks, two or so weeks for the next school committee meeting. So superintendent is going to speak on kind of the metrics and a dashboard for tracking COVID testing. And then also the testing program that she has helped put together with a number of other people. But she's taking the leadership role in putting together a testing program, I think is, that has made national news, right? That's what we just heard. So Dr. Golston.
Excellent, thank you. So I think that, you know, as we opened up our elementaries, now we are in the process of being in our second week here at, well, actually, third week now at the middle school. There's been a lot of questions around the metrics that we use to consider when we change from one model to the next. And so, you know, I know that we've talked along the way about having a dashboard. So now that we're, you know, obviously in a, in a time where the numbers are going up, I think the community is interested in, you know, really seeing that weekly dashboard on the website and having that information at people's fingertips. So I put together, you know, a dashboard that encapsulates the, the internal, you know, data that we have been considering. And I, I would love to get feedback from the school committee around this as well in terms of, you know, if it's, if this is what you, you as parents as well think would be important for the community to see. And I did review all of this with Larry Ramden from the health department. It is, is no way a deviation from, you know, what is commonly, you know, utilized at this point in time pretty much across the state. But I did want to put it together in a dashboard. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I think. And then I'll just kind of walk you through what it is that I have. So basically, when, when we think about schools and COVID and when is that balance between being in person or not? Or when is it a balance of being hybrid or in person? There are many things that have to be considered along the way. And so, as I said before, you know, whenever a decision is made about, you know, schools either closing or reopening or moving or pivoting, that's a decision that will be based on looking at the metrics as well as consulting with the health department. When all is said and done, the health department, I said this at a couple of meetings, probably pretty much every meeting, when the health department, you know, knows something that's happening in town or, you know, is aware of, you know, community spread or whatever it might be, they're the ones that are going to have that more detailed information. So I do look to them to lead us oftentimes when we, we make these decisions and support us if we've decided to, you know, make a change. So it is important to know though, you know, if I were to decide to close the district or the schools, not that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has, you know, a say necessarily in that, but they do want to know if we are switching models. You know, I think there's obviously a tension in terms of, you know, being in school and not. And I think they just want to make sure that they're aware of the fact if a district was closing or we were considering closing a school. So I'm just going to walk through what I would consider, you know, five metrics. And there's probably a six one as well, but I, I thought I should just err on that side of five. The first one is the one that I think, you know, we have the most control over, which is the school building readiness. And X's mean that we're, we're good. Do we have the functioning windows or proper ventilation, including an air purifier in every room? And every office, by the way, I think we have an air purifier in all the offices as well. Does the room have a sink with running water and a functional soap dispenser or a hand sanitizing station? Another big benchmark which we moved to, probably it's been about six weeks now, is sanitizing the rooms with an electrostatic sprayer every day. So I want to make sure that the community knows that that is something that we do. I don't know if you've seen this, the sprayers, but you know, our custodians walk around the buildings and they literally spray every room every night to make sure that they are sanitized before the next day. And then is there a cleaning plan and protocol aligned with the CDC's recommendations? And so, you know, as you know, we were waiting for our purifiers. And so therefore, right now, at this point in time, based on this metric, metric one, we're looking pretty good. I would comment that my vision for the dashboard would be to go back to do a four-week glance. And so that's why you're seeing four weeks of data. We're supposed to consider three, but I think it's good to see the trends over time for the community. So metric number two is the Watertown Community Health. So cases in Watertown for 100,000 and the percent positive. So those are the, the metric two and metric three. So one thing that, you know, we, we started back in August. The state had released metrics around COVID and they had, you know, basic criterias that, that indicated if a district was going to be gray, green, yellow or red. And there was a shift in that, I think it was about November 6th, in terms of what the state was saying about the, that color coding system. And so it's gotten a little bit more complex in terms of what we're thinking about. And I would say just in, in, in basic terms for Watertown, what we're looking at in terms of metrics is, you know, we're yellow right now, which means that there's more than 10 cases per 100,000 and, but not, sorry. Or the positivity rate is 5%, which it is not. So that's kind of confusing. But let's just start with metric number two, which is community health. So right now, once again, it's, if it's more than 10, a district might be yellow or red. That's a better way to say this. We are yellow because we are, yes, we are higher than 10, but our positivity rate is lower than 5%. That's the state's metrics. And I'll say a little bit lower that I think that it's a better gauge. I mean, that, I mean, I'm going to tell you that I just, part of this is comfort in the sense of, you know, a threshold of four. Five to me, you know, is, it's pretty high. I mean, I think that starting at four would be a better place for Watertown. So metric two, once again, is the cases per 100,000. And then metric three, they're tightly aligned, meaning those are the two like state level metrics would be the percent positivity. So I don't have anything filled in for this week because we don't have those metrics yet. But right now, you know, according to the state, Watertown is yellow, which according to the state means that we should either be in person or hybrid. As you know, we're, we're hybrid at this point and soon to be at the high school. And I would, let me keep going and then I'll go back and say one more thing. So I think there's been a lot more conversation around district and school specific conditions. So this is important because, you know, just because we might be yellow across the district and across the community doesn't mean that there might not be something that's happening within a particular school. So a lot of questions have been around, well, when do you potentially close down a school? Or, you know, close down two schools and not the whole district? So in essence, you know, we try, we're going to track this in terms of current cases that are within a school and within a cohort. So, you know, in essence, if there's, you know, no cases, that's great. I would call that green. I mean, I, you know, this is me color coding. I'm just saying, this is not something that came from the state. Whereas if there were, you know, one or two within a cohort or, but no more than three cohorts, then, you know, we would still be yellow. But it's once you start moving past that, meaning if you had cases in, you know, four or more cohorts, or you had more than two in a particular classroom, that that might be an indication of, you know, might, may or may not be an indication of transmission in schools. But rather than take a chance, that might be a moment where you consider shutting down a school, whether it be for 14 days or whatever the Board of Health thinks is best for that particular community. And then if you're at the high school level, since there aren't necessarily cohorts, we would, well, there are cohorts, there's A and B, but there aren't particular cohorts within the day. It would be a 2% positivity rate within the school. So if in a cohort, there are 300 students, a 2% rate would be, you know, six, six students within that cohort would indicate that, you know, you might be in a place where there might be transmission within the schools. So I would like to make sure that on the dashboard, we continue to have this data kept up. And I would say these are current cases in school. So that's another, you know, point is we have students who are remote who have COVID, but they are not part of this dashboard because they are, you know, in a remote learning environment. So they would not be on here because they're not in school. So really what we're thinking about here are students that are in school and were COVID positive, you know, within the schools and then counting back 48 hours. And that's what we count in terms of this, this particular metric. And then the last one, which it's hard to put a chart here and I really won't. But the last one would be the extensive community spread when it's not possible to trace the origin of a contact. That's when you, when you can't do the contact tracing and figure out, you know, oh, I spent, you know, I was at a party with three people and one of them has COVID. You know, that's when you can trace it back and there's no concern that it was a transmission from somebody you don't know. But if we get to that place where there's, you know, kind of widespread community spread, then we would be thinking about what will we do as a district? And as I said, the only, the only metric that wouldn't be here, which I can add, and we can talk about that, is our testing. So, you know, we are testing our staff and our students, which we're going to talk about next. I could add a dashboard box here around positive cases within our testing, you know, and that might be something that we could add as well. But knock on wood, so far we've had done. So I also put in here just a link. I'm just going to click on the link, I think. No, 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 sorry, I linked it down here. So this is, in, it's in the actual document, it would be a link. But this is a little bit of a further detailed explanation about that, you know, when you might consider closing a school versus, you know, closing a district or shutting down a cohort. So that's just a little bit of a further definition of, you know, when there might be an opportunity to think about closing a school. So I put this out there just to get some feedback. Once again, we, we spoke with the Department of Health around this and, and I would say just to wrap it up again, there's not, it's not like this is, I know some, some districts have, you know, kind of on and off buttons, you know, if it's this and that, then you close. This is more of a, you have to look at the full picture as to, you know, when, when is the right time or when is the best time to pivot? So it's not just one metric or two out of four or three out of five or whatever it might be. It's really just, once you start seeing your metrics ticking up into the red, then you have to have deeper conversations about what's next. And that's what I have for you this evening.
All right. So maybe, so Didi, you're going to talk also about the testing, right? But maybe you want people to react to this now? Maybe do that first or what's your preference?
I probably would rather talk about this now and then talk about testing.
Yeah. So if people have, have comments from the school committee, have comments or thoughts? I will say, an idea of, you know, I'm not exactly sure what it would be, but a metric around the testing could be good. If, if, if the testing is going to be, you know, kind of at a level of systematic, kind of, you know, week by week, such that it, it makes it, you know, makes it relatively easy to kind of create some metric that you can follow, that might be, that might be good. Kendra?
Thanks. This looks good. I think to your point, John, maybe just tracking the testing rather than creating like a more formal metric out of it. I had one question. What's in, in metric four, what's the difference between current and active? Is there a difference?
That would be changing my mind.
Oh, yes. So I understand. That's okay.
It's current. It could be either or. I just didn't change.
It's the same, I just didn't, yeah, okay. That's totally, I just didn't know if there was a difference. And I just, I really appreciate that there isn't like a on-off switch. You know, there could be, we could have certain numbers in Watertown, but they're not at all reflective of what's happening in the schools. And, you know, looking at where the transmission is, I think is really important. So I'm grateful for you for thinking holistically about it.
Okay.
Yep.
Mark?
Thank you. I just want to say that this is a real, thank you for doing this. It's a very clear and easy document to understand. And I think it's very easy for something to be pointed to in a document like this that doesn't have all kinds of things that people won't understand. So I'm real, I'm really happy with this. And I think this is a good, good way to keep this, you know, keep the community informed, keep the school committee informed and keep the parents and everyone else informed. So thank you.
Yep.
Other, other comments from school committee members? I just echo Mark's. I do appreciate that. I think it's a, a good step in communicating with the broader community. Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Golston, why don't you continue on with the discussion on testing?
Okay. I have a, a, let me just stop sharing. I have a slide deck that I actually showed the middle school families that I'd like to share with the community, kind of just outlining it. And then I'll discuss our plans moving forward in the coming weeks. One second. I really, I'm very, I apologize, I'm very red. I think it's from being on national television. I can't seem to, it's all right. I'm like, wow. I'm all right. No worries here.
I just got a text, the president-elect saw it.
There you go. I'm like, I, yeah, here we go. See now I'm more red. Thank you. It's okay. Screen share. Okay. So I, I want to talk a little bit about testing. So we have been on a roll in terms of staff testing. And Kathy can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we're in week eight, heading into week nine. It's been very successful. It's been very reaffirming for staff and reassuring for staff that, you know, even when they're, you know, working with our, some of our high中的students or in classes that seem like there's so many kids in there, but there's really just 10. I think having testing helps to make you feel that what we're doing is keeping, keeping ourselves and keeping our students safe. So, you know, the next step from that would be obviously thinking about student testing. You know, we built this a little bit after universities. Certainly that was the, the thing that they wanted to do to, to move forward and be open, which I think we found, you know, either it's enabled some of the universities to stay open or they needed to shut when they saw that there was an outbreak. And private schools, you know, a lot of our private schools that are in school right now are testing. And that's, you know, that's unfortunate that, you know, it's either a university or a private school is where you can test. And if it's that important, then we should be doing it here in our, our schools as well. So, you know, what we're, what we're proposing is doing pooled testing. And I'm going to go over a little bit about what that means. We did baseline testing for our elementary students, individual tests, just like what everybody's getting right now for Thanksgiving travel. PCR test, which is the, kind of the gold standard of, you know, testing. And we're going to do the same thing for our high school students on Monday. Once again, individual testing, PCR. And we'll get ready to roll into the hybrid, knowing that, you know, and I think that Principal Jacob Ozzy is doing a great job, you know, getting people, getting the word out there that this is important so that we can, you know, open feeling really good. But then after that, we need to think about how do we sustain this? Fold in our elementary, continue with our middles and then work with our highs. And the way to do that economically and efficiently, not just economically, but efficiently, is to do pooled testing. And as that implies, it's really just grouping kids together and, and, you know, doing one round and seeing if anybody in the pool has COVID. So I'm going to explain a little bit more in a further slide. So I do want to talk just really briefly about why, why test? You know, the best answer is to keep our students, teachers and staff safe. I mean, that's the reason why you do it. It's an additional safety net above and beyond the precautions that we already have in place. You know, I, as I, in the 45-minute interview that was cut to 30 seconds, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about the fact that Watertown has kind of gone above and beyond to keep our, our students and our staff safe. But here's just another safety net that we have for, for all of our people within our community. It allows us to quickly identify COVID cases, stop any potential transmission through contact tracing and allow schools to remain open. You know, a lot of people, I mean, I, I think we all want to know if somebody in the school, I, trust me, I believe that with our air purifiers and our masks and everything that we're doing, if somebody were in the building asymptomatic, I think we would still be pretty safe. But why have people in the buildings that are asymptomatic or, you know, even heading towards symptoms when it's not just being, oh, this is the next bullet. It's not just being safe within our schools, but our students, you know, are together in sports. They're together in after-school activities. They're, you know, at the park, you name it. And I think that we're also helping to prevent spread in the community, which I think is a big piece of this as well. It's more accurate than symptom tracking when all is said and done. And last but not least, it's free. So it's free at this time due to accessing our federal funds. And I think that we need to establish this protocol so that we can continue moving forward with our, our schools. So once again, what is a pooled PCR test or what is pooled PCR testing? You group students in groups of 10 and they're grouped together in a pool. So it's, the middle school is probably the best way to, to think about this. If there's a homeroom of 10 students, they're together in one pool. If there's a homeroom of 11 students, they're in two pools. So one pool of six and one pool of five. They, the samples are collected by our school nurses or volunteer medical professionals using a short nasal swab. I'll show you some pictures in another slide. It is very quick, very easy and just, it's not, it's not like the long swabs. Our samples are sent to the MIT Harvard Broad Institute's COVID testing lab, the Broad Institute's COVID testing lab. And with pooled testing right now, there's no identifiable personal health information. So basically what it is, is we take the 10 samples, we keep track of it internally. We send it to the lab. They only have 10 samples. They don't know which is which because it's a pool. And then they let us know whether there's a positive pool or a negative pool. So that's, that's important to know as well. So just to, just in case you're curious as to how this is, it's a three-step process for students. They blow their nose, they hand sanitize and they, the nurses will swab three times in each nostril for our students that are under the age of 14. And actually, students 14 and older can swab themselves, which is great. So this is very easy to do. So let's talk about what happens if there's a positive pool. So, you know, results are provided to the school nurses within 24 to 48 hours. Our, I must admit, in our first round of pools, it took a little bit longer, but I think that we're experiencing some, a little bit of a backup from Thanksgiving. But, you know, generally, we've been very good about getting our results back within 24 hours. You know, should be no more than 48 hours. And then anyone in a positive pool is called. So if I have a pool of eight, you know, we call the eight individuals that morning. They come back in for a reflex individual test for free. So, you know, we will, you know, if, if you're in a pool that's positive, you just come back in. We test you. You have to isolate for the day, which is, and this is why it's good to have this every other day cohorting, because you're not missing school, you're just home. You wouldn't have been home, you wouldn't have been in school anyways. And then, you know, we get the results and the person who is COVID positive would then have to obviously quarantine and move ahead. The other point about the, let me keep going and then I'll go back to that. So, you know, if, if it's elementary, you know, we close the cohort. So this is the other reason why pooled testing is, is it makes sense. Because if somebody was positive in a pool, even though the other nine students aren't, they would still have to quarantine because they're in elementary. We would quarantine the whole cohort, the whole group within the class. But at the middle school and the high school, due to the fact that, you know, the students are a little bit older, they're a little bit more dependable about staying where they're seated. We would actually only quarantine people who were six feet or less of distance. And in some cases, that might not be any close contacts. Or in another classroom where, you know, you're right at the six-foot level, it might be the people just right around the student that get to be, that have to be quarantined. So if you come back negative and you're not a close contact, those students can return to school. And that's just how that would go. So I put in that, I'll come back to it, sorry. When will the testing be done? So this is a, a big question. We are one of the first public schools to be testing. So tried and true models are still being developed. We have amazing nurses who are coordinating this and really thinking about how to make this happen. We are thinking at the elementary level, since we have not yet done this, that students would be tested by classroom throughout the day. We think it will take no more than five minutes to test a cohort of eight to 10 kids. Believe it or not, it's that fast. And our friendly nurses will swab the students. So, you know, whether it's, you just call the class like into the gym or you call the class into a larger area, that's, that's how we would do the elementaries. Middle school, we've already done this. It's worked really well. When students leave for their regular scheduled breaks, they have mask breaks throughout the day. Well, just once in the day. They'll stop at the testing center to be swabbed. So pretty fast, pretty quick. And the nurses have got it down pretty, pretty fast. We don't know, I'm going to own the fact that we don't know yet how we're going to do the high school. We know that on Monday, the 30th, it's not as much of an issue because the individual students are testing, so we don't have to worry about the pools. And Principal Jacob Ozzy has set up a, a system where they're coming in alphabetically and they're all, you know, signed up and they'll just come in that day. The following week is when we're going to have to determine how best to pool test the high school students. So we're going to give that one more week to figure out all the details on the high school kids for pool testing. And then before we go to questions, I did want to, I know on one of the slides, and I know that's it. I'm sure most people know that Watertown was one of the districts that applied for and are going to receive antigen tests. There's growing evidence that we can use those antigen tests as that reflex test. And it's a rapid test, which means, you know, if somebody was in the pool and, you know, one out of 10 is positive, the antigen test should be able to pretty accurately pick up that same positive person the next day, since the PCR test, which is the gold standard, indicated that somebody had it. So hopefully the next day, if we, you know, won't, this won't be for the, you know, several weeks, but we'd be able to do the rapid test and, you know, give kids and families a really quick peace of mind that, you know, their student either does have it so they can take care of that student in quarantine. you know, their student either does have it, so they can take care of that student and quarantine and, and move forward, or doesn't have it and just continue on. So that is one thing I wanted to mention as well. And I'm going to stop sharing and just, can I just share one more thing? Okay, sorry. The last thing I wanted to share was a schedule, just so you could see a little bit about, sorry, here I am. There we go. So this is what we're thinking in terms of how we're going to test. Let me just explain and I'll send this out to families tomorrow. So the week of November 30th, which is next Monday, as you can see here throughout the day, we're going to do the high school students, all students on Monday. But we're going to try to, what we'd like to do is have the elementary testing on Tuesday and Wednesday. You know, we would have the cohort A kids come in on Tuesday because they're not back in school until Wednesday, right? And the cohort B kids who aren't, I hope this works. I think I might have that backwards, I apologize. The point is, let me just make this simple. The first round of testing for the students at the elementary level, we'd like the parents to be there. I think it's really important for, you know, to have your, your mom or dad or your guardian or your, you know, your aunt or your uncle or, or somebody to be there with you so that you, you know, if I'm eight, I might be a little bit, you know, more nervous about being swabbed. So we thought that we would do that prior to that cohort coming back into school. Which would then also, you know, coming off of the Thanksgiving break, we'd have some, we'd have testing in place for those students as well. We're not able to do that with the middle school, the middle school testing would still be on Thursday and Friday of next week. But then we would swing into a more regular pattern. Kind of would be Thursdays and Fridays. Hosmer Lowell and would be Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And then the middle school would be Thursday and Friday and high school would be Monday and Tuesday. So we're trying to make sure we spread across the week to make sure that our, our staff that are doing the swabbing and checking people in have enough time to do that. So that's just a little sample of what the schedule is going to look like. So I'm going to stop sharing and then answer questions.
Okay. Questions from the committee? Have questions?
So your confused part is you want them to be tested before they go in person. So if the students in the elementary level are starting school next Wednesday, then cohort A would be the first group to be, no cohort B would be the first to be tested.
It's flipped.
Right?
Yes, so that chart is wrong.
That's what I was thinking in my head, but that's okay, but I, I see what you're saying now. And then, so that means the cohort A that goes on Thursdays would be tested on Wednesday.
Yep.
Okay, and you, you would like the parents to bring them to the site on that Wednesday.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're planning on doing that centrally at the middle school because that's where the swabbers are. And, you know, we would do it after school like at 12:45. I know there's an extension time, don't get me wrong, but it shouldn't take that long. But we do want to, we, we, I think it would, we think it would be best to do it with the parents the first time. Then they know, then it's not some, you know, stranger and they'll know it's not going to hurt and, you know, I just think it would help to ease the younger kids through the process.
So, so the idea that is that the parents would pick up their child and go over to the middle school to do it?
So they're not, they're not in on Tuesday, so they didn't have, they won't have to pick up their child. They'll just have their child and they'll go to the middle school on Tuesday. And same thing on Wednesday.
I see. And some, and you'll do a schedule of when they go?
Yes.
Like with the high schools doing alphabetical type thing?
Yes, they're going to do it by grade level. So they have a plan. And if there's siblings, we would do them together, like, you know, we could figure that out, but pick one of your grade levels and go at that time.
So elementary is starting on Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yep.
That's right?
Yes.
And DeeDee, could you just clarify, who are we encouraging to get this testing? Is it everybody? Is it specifically people who have been traveling? What, what's the kind of message that we're sending to the community?
Everybody. So the, I mean, the high school is everybody, no matter what, because that's baseline testing. We, we want to test them all and start school either, you know, knowing that we're ready to go or if there's a cluster, well, then we might have to think twice about what we're doing. But, you know, I think that it's a, it's at the high school level to pretty leap, it's a leap of faith if we don't do some testing. So let's, let's get them all in on Monday. Highly encouraged for everybody. And I think it's coinci, not coincidental, but it's, it's fortunate that elementary, we can test before, you know, after the, the travel, but not, it's not about the travel. It's about having that opportunity to get the parents in there to be with their kids to test if possible. And then, you know, middle school's already been testing, so they're already kind of set up. So they're just going to go on Thursday and Friday. And we are doing staff testing on Monday for anybody who, who did travel. Like we, we do want to prioritize the staff who traveled so that they can get tested on Monday.
Can I donate a question?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Kendra, go ahead.
I appreciate, you know, setting up the elementary like Tuesday, Wednesday and having a parent go with them. I do worry a little bit about, about having not as many people attend just because they're not in the school, you don't have as captive of an, of an audience. But I, I guess you may have to balance it out, of course, with. We have to balance it out with. Anyways. So I understand, I just, I do worry we'll get some drop off for that first week, that's all.
I think.
Can I, or can I ask, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. I just, and, and then if people still want to do it, like the next week, they can. It's not like they have to do that, but I mean, it, we'll see. I, I don't think, hopefully it won't be a tremendous amount of drop off, but again, I think that like I'd want to, I, I would want to take my kid the first time. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm sure both will. I, I know that, I don't know, every parent has a different schedule, so I'm just cognizant of that. Can I just add one more thing? You mentioned that the testing is free. I just wanted to mention for the public, it's free for students and families. It is not free. It's actually very expensive and the district's committing a lot of money and the town of Watertown is also committing a lot of money in Federal Cares Act and the district's committing a lot of money in the federal SO money to make this happen. So it's actually a really huge investment that is, they're doing it because it's really important and they're making sure it's free for families. I just wanted to note that.
Exactly.
Thank you. Mark?
I thank you. I do want to say that this is another program that I think is wonderful that we can put this together. And I know you've had so many challenges throughout this. Again, commend, might commend you and your staff for putting this together. I, I'm hoping that we can capture as many tests as possible. I'm kind of hesitant to think that everybody's going to get captured or everybody's going to come in for a test. And so I, I, I'm not sure how, you know, what, you know, other than continuing to call them, you know, what if a parent refuses to have their child tested? I mean, those are the types of things that people make personal decisions on. So, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get as many as possible, but I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned, but I, I'm, I am aware and I think the community should be aware that I don't think we're going to get everybody. You comment on that, please?
Yes, of course. So I go back to the point of, you know, in absence of testing, it, within our, our schools, I think we are prepared for, you know, whatever would cross the, the door. Meaning, you know, if a person were, like I said earlier, some asymptomatic, we have enough air purifier, purifiers, ventilation, you know, masks, et cetera, that, that's the whole point of doing the PPE is, you know, just in case there might be somebody who, you know, is COVID positive, who's in school. Chances are very low of transmission with all the PPE and the social distancing that we have. So even if we don't capture everybody, I, we're very confident about being in school. But I think it's that, again, it's a safety net that it would be ideal if we could get, you know, as many students as possible, but it's not, we're not relying on it. It's just another way to keep everybody safe. And, you know, and we say it, and I'll say it publicly here. It's, it doesn't mean you're, you're COVID free. It just means that in that moment in time, you don't have COVID. So like, it doesn't mean you can go, like all the people getting tested for Thanksgiving, it doesn't mean you can go and, and be with 20 people. That's not the point of this. That's important, meaning, you know, you could be COVID free today and COVID tomorrow, like that's, so it's, it's just a matter of screening and preventing people from coming in who are actively, actively have COVID. And we've seen it in Wellesley, I mean, that, that's the first place where they did testing. They had to shut down their high school because they had eight cases that were found from their screening. So like, can you, can you imagine if they didn't do the testing and those eight cases came in? It could have been 20 cases or 25 cases. So I think that, you know, and I think Wellesley might be, and I, I think there might be some people in the, in the, in the participants who might have a better, I think it's 80% of their students are tested right now. So they don't have 100%, but they did find eight that were positive. So I'm hoping that that doesn't happen in Watertown, but at least I know that if that is the case, I can, you know, quickly pivot.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Galston. Lily?
Thank you, and thank you to Dr. Galston. Also, I just, I want to thank all the community members who also have been so helpful in getting this information and helping support our testing system. You know, I've gotten numerous messages, actually just since the nightly news went on from colleagues around the state saying, how did Watertown do it? And, oh my gosh, we're so jealous. You know, how, how, how are you making this happen? And one, I can say fantastic leadership from our administration. So thank you to Dr. Galston and her team. And also a lot of community support and buy-in. So, you know, to Mark, to Mark's, you know, point about testing, I think we have a really strong group that is kind of leading some of this kind of drive towards testing. And I'm wondering if maybe we could also support that group with better outreach, you know, to encourage parents to test. I think, you know, the point that Mark made is very important is that, you know, if we're only getting 50% of parents to bring in their kids and do this, that's not going to be quite as helpful as if we can get up to that 80, 90% mark. So, you know, I guess the question is how can we, as a school committee, and how can we leverage our working group to support getting out, you know, a lot of kind of enthusiasm for testing? And, and what could we do to be helpful? And then what kind of other leverages might we be able to use that already exist? You know, whether it be our family liaisons and translation, I am concerned about bringing in our EL families, you know, and families who might be newer to Watertown, who might not be on all those listservs or all of those pages yet. So what might be useful, Dr. Galston, in kind of promoting the testing? And, and is there anything that we can do as a school committee to support that?
Um, I, I thank you for your offer. I, you know, I, I think that the, for, I think having, it's going to take a couple of weeks, if not a little bit longer, to get people to realize that it's, it's okay, like it's okay to test. You know, and, and, you know, after, I hate to say it, but we had the one case at the middle school and, you know, we got like 50 people signed up the next day. So like, you know, I think if people realize that, you know, it, it's, we're in a pandemic, like we, this is just one of those great, you know, opportunities that we have to help us through, you know, pandemic education. So I'm, I'm not, I think the liaisons, we, we work with them all the time in terms of reaching out to our families. So maybe, and I, I haven't thought about that, but, you know, maybe it's working with Kate and the liaisons to do some outreach directly with our families. And I know that she would do that pretty readily and we now have far more liaisons. I was like, I don't know if you saw that Kendra, I didn't know I had so many liaison, I just found that out today. We've got like four Spanish, three Portuguese and one Presto. So we're increasing our numbers because of COVID. I mean, that's all part of the grant to make sure that we have the, the people out there. So we're just going to mobilize them and that's a great idea, I appreciate that. I don't, I don't, I don't know what else right now to think about, but we should think about how we get the word out.
Dr. Gal, someone, someone asked in, in the chat whether it can be mandatory. And they, they use the analogy to, which I think is a state requirement. You know, someone who's in sports, it's mandatory that they have a, a physical or they can't participate in sports. I don't know whether there is any, I'm not sure of the legal kind of context for that.
I will investigate.
I think that sport requirement is a state requirement, I believe. That's not something the district has imposed.
No, I think that is definitely a, a state requirement. And I, I think that it's every year for, for sport, for athletes. I mean, I, you know, not to put Somerville on the spot, but Somerville made it a mandate, so I will, I will find out from them how they did that, but.
Okay. Anyone other, other questions from the, the committee? I have just a couple of clarifications. So staff, kind of on an ongoing basis, staff can, will, will test on Monday?
Staff, no, no, yes, staff that traveled can come in and test on Monday.
That's kind of after Thanksgiving, but what after that, kind of moving forward?
So our staff testing is every Thursday and Friday, and then we will be adding in high school staff on Mondays. Right, Kathy? I'm like, clarify, make, make sure. Yep. Once we fold in high school after the 30th, so beginning on the 7th, the staff testing will be on Mondays too.
And will that be in the, in the, eventually you're going to move to where all the, the testing will be in the individual buildings?
Not necessarily. I don't know yet. Meaning the high school testing, we determined, I think we're going to do it at the high school. But we, we now have all middle and elementaries testing at the middle school. And I don't, I mean, I think people are probably still, this is so exciting that they haven't necessarily complained about that, but it's really great for our swab, but not, really don't have to swab them, but our, our nurses to have them all in one place. You know, we're going to see how that goes, if that becomes more burdensome in the future, then we might move into the buildings. But right now it, it seems to be working. I mean, everybody on this Zoom call that's a staff member with the exception of maybe one or two are tested, right, people? I mean, have you ever had to wait in line? Nope. It's like, you drive up and you're right out, so.
Okay. One other, just a clarification. At one point when you're talking, a couple of times you would make the comment that, you know, depending on circumstances, you would, there would be a, they would quarantine a cohort. But just clarifying, when you, because if I'm a parent thinking about that and you said, you know, like the elementary school at the Hosmer or whatever has this cohort A and cohort B, you're not quarantining the whole cohort.
No, the class within the cohort.
The, the piece within the cohort where you and others do very, very close kind of contact tracing. Although at the elementary level, you're, you're being more expansive about that. But it's just a component within the cohort that's relevant for that class or that group.
Right, and that, that's why we're sticking to the pools within the class or the homeroom at the middle school because you're going to have to isolate anyways. So yes, it's just the class, you know, Mrs. Smith's grade three cohort A class, if there was a positive pool, would be the ones that would have to isolate.
Anyone else, other, other questions from the committee? Okay. All right, let's, let's move on. And again, thank you very much for that, that presentation and all the work that you're doing on this. Next would be action items. We have one, one action item is around the subcommittee, the athletic subcommittee. So Amy, if you want to give the report and then we can approve the report and then go to the action item.
Okay, sure. Hold on just one moment. Claire, Claire, you have to go away with that. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so we had a meeting of the athletic subcommittee on Friday, November 20th via Zoom, started at three o'clock. We had myself, Lily Raymond Reed, who is a member of the subcommittee, as well as Kendra, David Stokes, Dr. Galston, Ryan Murphy, our athletic director, and Joel, you're going to kill me, Gia Cabozzi.
Nailed it.
Thank you. We had Ryan review the winter season sports for 2020, 2021 season. It will begin on December 14th per the MIAA Board of Directors. Games for those two sports that we're having at this time are basketball and I'm drawing a blank, it's in here too. Basketball and hockey, sorry. They're going to start mid-January. The hockey and basketball are the only two seed sports that will be played. Ryan had made a recommendation to not have swimming due to the fact that we're in a co-op program with Arlington and keeping with the safety of our work with, for our students, it's our priority that swimming just probably isn't an option where they would be all together from these different towns in a pool. Track and field, girls volleyball, football will all be moved to fall two timetable, which will roughly be February to April. Wrestling will be moved to spring. At this time, the Middlesex League is not allowing any spectators into the winter sports. Watertown Cable, however, will be able to live stream our home games. And at this time, no middle school sports will be offered. And at this time, no middle school sports will be offered because in our league, the middle school sports, the other towns are not participating in sports. So we wouldn't have anyone to have competition with. The schedules are being completed during this time. Registration will be open for winter sports. We're hoping for tomorrow, November 24th. We discussed as a board to create other outdoor options for student athletes. So the athletic department will work with the principals and superintendent on options. There was an update that we partnered with the Positive Coaching Alliance for this year. This is a group that will speak with our athletic department on developing some curriculum, professional development for our coaches. They can set goals, provide PD for coaches, like I mentioned, give us feedback to better our coaches and athletes. I also want to just kind of reiterate what Mr. Santola had said earlier to congratulate our student athletes that participated in fall sports this year, a great job during these very difficult times. And then at the end, we made a motion that was approved three to one to recommend this report to the full school committee for our proposed winter sport recommendations.
Thank you, Amy. Is there a motion to approve the report?
I make a motion to approve the report.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? So have a roll call, Amy?
Andrew Foley.
Yes.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Max Ediris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay. That approves. So the, the action item would be approval of the, the winter sports with basketball and ice hockey.
I make a motion to approve the winter sports as has been presented.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Max Ediris.
Yes.
Andrew Foley.
Yes.
John Portz.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Next would be the, some several reports, starting with the policy subcommittee. So there's, there's, the only item here for vote would be just to approve the report. But they had a meeting also on Friday, so ask Lilly to the chair to report.
Thank you, John. So the policy subcommittee met at 4 o'clock on Friday, November 20th, just after the athletic subcommittee meeting. We actually started off, I made an opening statement in which I actually apologized, and Leila's here, so I'm going to apologize directly to Leila and say, Leila, I am very sorry for the experience that you shared. And I'm also sorry to any other students who have experienced any bullying or harassment or racism in our schools. So, you know, I gave that opening statement at the policy subcommittee meeting, but I do feel like it's appropriate to give it again here. And then we had a really, I think, robust and, and powerful meeting that I thought was very, it was very good in terms of just kind of sketching out what this district has done in the past and then where we need to go. So we began by kind of reviewing our procedures that are currently in place. You know, we kind of defined bullying versus harassment, explained the kind of process that our schools follow when doing an investigation and the, the kind of safety plans that are put into place when they become necessary. You know, and then we really got into talking about the process that we're using right now to review our bullying prevention plan. We have an advisory team that's been created, led by Kathy Damaris. And, and it's really been doing this work since February of 2020. But obviously with COVID, some of that work has been slowed down, unfortunately. Which, you know, is, is something that's kind of been, been happening with a lot of things in schools these days. But that work has continued to progress this fall. And they have a draft plan that will be completed by December. And then that will be presented to the school community for feedback. We talked a lot about the needs to address multiple different subgroups in making sure that we get good community feedback on our bullying prevention plan. And then kind of talking about the idea of restorative justice and kind of where that fits within our school communities. And kind of how we're going to move forward. The other thing that the district has committed to is asking for an outside review of how our bullying investigations are executed. And making sure that we are getting some really robust feedback to make sure that our, our plans are really as top notch as they can be. And we also heard a lot about how students have been real leaders in, in talking about and hearing about what kind of needs to happen to feel safe in their schools. And the idea of having a two-pronged review board for any cases that might go through an anonymous reporting system. So again, a lot of ideas kind of really trickling out, and then the kind of work that's being done by our task force on this with the steps moving forward. So I felt like it was a really positive meeting that really helped the community understand that we do understand that there are some, some things that need to be improved and the steps that we're taking to hopefully improve them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lilly. Why don't we approve the report? So is there a motion to approve the report?
Make a motion to approve the report.
Your second?
Second.
All right, so discussion? This is an opportunity, if anyone wants to make any other additional comments here, I just want to, you know, I thank Lilly and the subcommittee for, for kind of taking on this issue, providing an opportunity for people to speak. And I think as Lilly noted, you know, there's more conversation certainly to go. And there's a, in fact, the superintendent has an anti-bias coalition meeting tomorrow, a community forum coming up after Thanksgiving. So there'll be, and the prevention plan that's being developed is going to go through a series of reviews over the next couple of months as it's kind of refined and completed. So again, thanks for that work. Anyone else, any other comments or thoughts? Okay.
Can I just say something?
Yes. Maybe you want to speak particularly, Dr. Galston, to the kind of outside review? I mean, Lilly mentioned it, but do you want to speak to that?
So, so two things I wanted to mention, one of which is, I, I agree. I think that the, the meeting went very well. I think that there's work to be done. You know, as I said at the meeting, you know, we, we can have policies and procedures, but really when all is said and done, it's how do we implement those in a fair and consistent way? And, you know, that really gets to the heart of the issues that are, are happening within our schools and with our, our students. So, you know, in that vein, to try to figure out if there's work to be, like, what work needs to be done. You know, we have, as we just talked about, the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan Advisory Team. But I think more importantly is, you know, there's been a heightened questioning of our, our implementation of our policies. And sometimes we, we, in an organization, don't necessarily see what might be right or wrong. And it's really time to get outside eyes to come in and say, this is what you're doing well, and this is where you're really falling down. So that is something that we're going to do. We're actually going to do two different reviews. One, you know, very specifically around specific cases from our own student services attorney. That's more of an internal, you know, review, but also hiring somebody from the outside to look at our policies, procedures, and processes, and really provide us a recommendation for what we need to do better. So that's something that we're going to do. The other thing is, I wanted to mention at that meeting, it was brought up, you know, as a, as a step, and I didn't have an answer on Monday night about, you know, could a student bring with them a trusted adult if they wanted to, you know, report? And that is, you know, absolutely something that we will incorporate into that reporting system and encourage our, you know, students, if they feel safer, you know, reporting with, with a trusted adult, then that is something that, you know, we'll, we'll make sure we put in, in the plan. So thank you to bringing that up. And then I just wanted to follow up and let you know that we did find that that's something that we could certainly discuss further.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Galston. Anyone else, any other comments? Okay, let's, so we, a motion was made and seconded to accept the report from the subcommittee. Amy, roll call, please.
Yes. David Stokes.
Yes.
Max Ediris.
Yes.
Andrew Foley.
Yes. Yes.
John Portz.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item, school committee chair reports. I just a, a brief comment. I, I just want to note that certainly it's a, perhaps an understatement to say that these are very, certainly very challenging times. You know, we're working through the pandemic with different teaching and learning models, addressing very important issues of bullying and discrimination. You know, as we strive to create an environment of respect and support for all members of our school community. And I want to acknowledge the work that's being done in, by, across the district to deliver the best kind of educational environment possible. And acknowledge the work of the parents and teachers working through all the transitions between remote and hybrid learnings, a challenge for all. I want to acknowledge the work of the administrators and the support staff to help make that happen. And I want to particularly acknowledge the work of the superintendent for her work in leadership in this area, a very important area of around the pandemic, as well as issues of kind of respect and support for all members of the community. So we have a few days of a break coming up, a holiday break here. I hope everybody, people enjoy that time together. But stay safe and healthy. Small group gatherings are encouraged for yourself, your family, and the broader community. So thank you very much. Dr. Galston, your opportunity for a report.
Yeah, I, so in the same vein, you know, as we head into the, the Thanksgiving time, I always just want to recognize and think, I'll start from, you know, the school committee supporting, supporting the work of the district, but you know, most importantly, I would just want to thank the staff as you just did in terms of, you know, this has been an incredible eight months. I'm hoping that I don't have to say it's been an incredible 15 months, but, you know, for right now, it's, it, we, we wouldn't be where we are today in terms of the successes that we're having in terms of our, our students and our outreach and everything that we're doing without our staff. And I couldn't work in a better place with a stronger community. And I'm just very appreciative of everything that, that's being done. Other than that, I think I've shared with the group what I wanted to this evening, and just have a really great Thanksgiving to everybody in the community.
Thank you. Next item would be new business. Any new business for the committee?
I would like to actually put up new business. We do have a student here who has made a request that I would like to honor and make sure does go onto our agenda. There is interest from the Watertown Middle School to fly a Black Lives Matter flag. I, I do apologize. I don't know the processes on this and, and what we would need to do in order, because I know that whenever we put something outside the building, if there does, there is like a process for approval. I don't know whether that would go to buildings and grounds. Again, not entirely sure how to introduce this, but there does seem to be interest in the raising of a Black Lives Matter flag at WMS. If I would ask that the committee consider this request and also the mechanisms that would need to go into making that happen and supporting that request as well.
Okay. So I think you're probably right, the buildings and grounds might be the appropriate place for that discussion. And I haven't had a discussion with the superintendent. I don't know kind of the procedures and all the rest for that, but we'll, we'll, we'll put that in consideration, bring that forward. Talk about it. Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Okay, announcements on the agenda are listed a number, which has been, few have been, have been mentioned, the anti-bias coalition meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The high school, high school building community forum is November 30th at 6:00 PM. That's an important event for people, which the whole community hopefully should be interested in, kind of the new high school process, building process. The Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee is meeting on December 1st at 4:30. The Budget and Finance Subcommittee is meeting on December 1st at 6:30. The School Building Committee is meeting on December 2nd at 6:00. There is a community forum, school-based community forum that the superintendent called, which would be on the issues particularly around the bullying issues that came up and broadly speaking, in December 3rd at 6:00 PM. And then our next school committee meeting is December 7th at 7:00 PM. Any other announcements? No. Okay, public forum? Anyone wish to speak in public forum?
There's one hand up.
They have Peter, and is that from before?
No, he just put it up.
Oh. Peter, do you want to speak again?
Yes, John, thank you very much. This is your birthday present to me. Turned 60 in November 17th, so I get a two for one. I just wanted to mention, I'll be calling the, we're doing again, the snow shoveling program. I'll be reaching out. So I just want to, okay, recreation just has to, I think, do a better job reaching out to the high school and the middle school and support of that program. So I appreciate your support on that. And then I have talked to Ryan Murphy. If there's anything recreation would do to help supplement some activities. We had a nice volleyball, outdoor volleyball program this fall. So if there's anything that the recreation department could do to help supplement some of the recreational programs this winter, we'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. Ruth, Ruth Henry?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, so I just wanted to update folks about a few things going on. One is a Read the Streets initiative as part of Unity Breakfast and in collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. Many student leaders have been working over the last couple of weeks to create banners of civil, quotes by civil rights leaders, past and present. So I wanted to encourage folks to participate in that, that we'll be doing art builds on this Sunday as well in the Boys and Girls Club parking lot as part of the King and Response Team. And also wanted to just encourage folks to visit the Story Share. So there's a, an Instagram, at Watertown Story Share, where stories have begun to come forward of families' experiences with racism in our schools. And I want to encourage folks that are listening in on this to share their own stories as well. If you would prefer to do it over email, you can do it at WatertownStoryShare@gmail.com so that we can start to really understand what's going on in our, in our schools beyond the stories that have begun to come out, you know, more and more coming. So I also wanted to just frame things a little bit in terms of the pledge that has been proposed by students, which I told this committee about back in August. But the pledge is around listening, learning, growing, and acting when it comes to racism. And I think some of what has come out recently has propelled us into our listen stage. So I just want to encourage folks to be in a listening state while hearing these, these stories that are beginning to come out from under the rug in our community.
Okay, I thank you, Ruth. Anyone else wish to speak from the public, in the public forum? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The second? A second to adjourn?
Second, sorry.
Nobody wants to leave.
I'm going to leave if you don't, you know. Amy, roll call.
Okay, Kendra Foley.
Yes.
Lilly Raymond Reed.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Max Ediris.
Yes.
John Portz.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody for coming.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.